Good morning, good evening. Okay. Hi, everyone. I need to just do some sound checks. Can you hear me okay? You can leave a comment. I'd love to see you. Also, if you don't mind showing your face. Let me know in the comments if you can hear me okay. Good morning. Alright. Where are you chiming in from this morning? Or evening? Please make sure you're nice and comfy. And I no one has messaged me yet if you can hear me. So before we begin, I gotta make sure you can hear me. Is anyone, does anyone mind showing their face? So maybe, oh, here we go. Yay. Good morning, everyone. Oh, this is so cool. Yay. I'm like, do I unmute everyone or not? But I want to say hi, so no, don't
What's up Kamala?
Oh, hi.
Cody.
Hi Cody. Okay, so everyone, everyone is muted then, okay? And then I guess you can unmute yourself, but um when, when we get into the breathing, please don't unmute yourself. Because we want everyone to kind of dive into their own experience. So how's everyone doing this morning? Good, yeah. Um, if you could, so let me look. This is the first time I'm doing this, so let me um if you have any questions, put them in the chat to the side. And please be sure you have a comfy place to lie down. Or you can sit up, but I would lie down if I were you. And you can have the camera kind of up against a lamp or wall or something, so I can see you um lying down breathing. And, and there may be some of you who don't want to show your video, and that's okay too. I'll, I'll still be able to guide you through this. Use the restroom real quick if you need to. Glass of water. If you're, if you're new to this breath work stuff, you may get thirsty. So uh, I took, just take a few sips of water throughout the breaths. Hi Mariano. Take some water whenever you need it. Grab some extra pillows or blankets. If you can ask the questions on the side, I have everyone muted. Here, let me um I think Lisa, did you have a question? Let's see, who is not muted? Okay, sorry, I'm, I'm still learning all this stuff, so um how do I mute the whole group? I'll figure it out, okay? If everyone on here could mute yourself, that'd be awesome. I think everyone's muted except for one person on the Samsung. Oh, I think I can mute them. Here we go. Okay. Oh, 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 okay. You guys are awesome. Thanks for being patient with me. So um, the best way to do this is lying down. And so Jimmy, you got a nice place, comfy spot to lay down? Um, so I'm gonna get you guys going into the breathing. And during this session, um, just do the best you can. There's no right or wrong way to do this. This year has been really crazy for many of us. So this is your 60 minutes for yourself to you know, it's all for you right now. So please take advantage of this time. Because what's gonna happen is, I'm gonna get you to a really relaxed uh place where your body can just let go of all the stress and the fear and the worry. And then by the end of the 60 minutes, you're gonna feel so much better. Your body is gonna feel like it's floating. You'll have a smile on your face. So just do your best to do the whole session with me. It does go by really quickly. Okay. Just check. And thank you all for being here. This is amazing. Thirty-two people on here. That is so cool. And it's just gonna magnify love and radiance as soon as we're done with all this. And while we're doing this, so okay, here we go. Alright, so you can hear me okay, thumbs up? Okay, oh, you guys are so awesome. Thanks for being here. Okay. So what I'm gonna do is I'm going to gently guide you into the breathing pattern. Because we hold our breath so much, it, it is kind of hard in the beginning to, to, you know, take a nice, deep, full breath in. So be really loving and gentle on yourself. By the end of the 60 minutes, you're gonna be able to breathe all the way down into your toes. So for now, we're just gonna warm the body up. So before we begin, I do like to lie flat on my back. I like to have a pillow underneath my neck. I like to have a couple pillows underneath my knees. And I do like to have a blanket just in case, because sometimes you might get a little chilly while you're doing this. Awesome, yeah, and, and you, or you could do this sitting up, but this year's been pretty crazy, so why not just sit back and enjoy the ride? Yep, Kleenex is good. Sometimes people get emotional. If you, if, if you feel like you're gonna have a nice little cry, Kleenexes are nice too. I've got my just in case, I got mine. Okay, here we go. But no worries, you can use your t-shirt. If you don't have any, okay. I love you guys, yay, let's do this. Alright, so let's begin. We're, we're gonna start by, uh, let's just take three deep, slow breaths in and out through the nose or the mouth. And again, nice, big, deep breaths. Beautiful. Okay, whenever you're ready, just do your best, best to breathe along with me. So we're gonna, if you can, close your eyes, relax your jaw, let it float open. And we're gonna inhale into the mouth. Soft exhale. Beautiful. Inhale. Soft exhale. And I'm gonna start you out pretty slow. If you've done this before, do whatever you gotta do, but you can go a little bit faster. But we're just kind of slowing the body down with the breath. Inhale. Exhale. Inhale. Exhale. Beautiful. And right now, we're just taking our time. We're giving our mind and body permission to relax a little more. And we breathe in. Breathe out. Breathe in. Breathe out. Beautiful. If you need a sip of water, take a sip. Come back into the breathing. And right now, we're just doing our best to focus on each breath in. And breath out. Breathe in. Breathe out. Beautiful. And it's okay if you're fidgety, if there might be some of you that are fidgety during this time. It's totally part of the process. Let your body fidget, but keep that breath going. Nice, gentle, deep breath in. Soft exhale. And again, we're just warming the body up. So don't worry where the breath goes. Don't worry if it goes in your chest or in your belly. We're just inviting the oxygen into the body. And we will get to that in another part of the session. But right now, we're just giving ourselves a break. Inhale. Exhale. Inhale. Exhale. Inhale. Exhale. We breathe in. Breathe out. And for those, those of you just joining, just find a comfy place to lie down. And we're inhaling. Exhale. Inhale. Exhale. We're just warming the body up. Do the best you can. So we're gonna take inhale. Exhale. In. Breathe in. Breathe out. And if you need to adjust, grab a sip of water. We're just getting started with this. And there may be some of you who may start to feel sensations already. And that's a good thing. That means your body's starting to relax. And now you can send some love. Use the oxygen to breathe through wherever you carry symptoms in the body. So we're gonna, this is the breathing pattern we're gonna gently move into. So do the best you can. We're gonna breathe in through the mouth. One, two, three, soft exhale. So we inhale. Soft exhale. We breathe in, one, two, three, soft exhale. Beautiful. Inhale. Exhale. Inhale. Exhale. And there might be a lot of energy rushing through people's bodies. If you need to take a moment, take a moment, grab a sip of water and then come back into it. You may start to feel a little dizzy and it will pass. Just do the best you can right now. We've been through a lot this year. So we're just giving our body and our mind permission to just go through the motions. And then we inhale. Exhale. Breathe in. Breathe out. In. Out. Inhale. Exhale. Breathe in. Out. And it doesn't matter where the oxygen is going at the moment. We're just giving ourselves this time to breathe in and breathe out. If you have questions, please write in the comment below and then I will answer it for you. Because I know, um, I'm just getting adjusted with this whole Zoom thing. So I know there were some of you who are waiting to get in and I do apologize for that. Okay, and no matter what's going on, we're gonna breathe in. And breathe out. Breathe in. Breathe out. And this is a very soft breathing pattern. You should not feel like you're hyperventilating. If you do, go back to your regular breath for a moment. This is very gentle, slowing the breath down as we, we're moving through each chapter. So we inhale. Exhale. And someone just wrote, if they're getting lightheaded, is that okay? Yes, absolutely. That means that the oxygen is working and your body knows what to do. So if you want to, if you feel like you're getting lightheaded, let's breathe for a minute through our nose. Like, so we're gonna do it like this. Inhale. Exhale. In. Out. And if you feel lightheaded, imagine there's a balloon in your head, in your brain, and blow the balloon up with each breath in. Beautiful. You guys are doing great, ladies and gents. And please, if you do have questions, let me know right in the comment below. And we are coming into the part of the session where you are going to start feeling sensations. And just know that you are safe and protected. The oxygen is doing what it's gotta do and your body knows how to heal itself. So I invite you to take three deep, slow breaths wherever you have those sensations. Some people get tingling, tightness, itchy. You know, some people start to feel anxious or nervous. And this is your body's way of releasing the stress. Okay, so let's take three deep breaths in. And exhale. Inhale. Exhale. Breathe in. Breathe out. You're doing great. And only if you're ready, see if you can breathe all the way down into your belly. And exhale. And go back to the mouth breathing. Breathe in. Breathe out. Breathe in. Breathe out. Inhale. Exhale. And it does take a few minutes for the body to start relaxing. So um, you're right where you're supposed to be. And we breathe in. Breathe out. And allow your feelings and the sensations. Just do your best to allow them to do what they're gonna do. And do your best to keep focusing on each breath in. And breath out. Breathe in. Breathe out. You're doing great. I love what I'm seeing. I'm seeing a lot of people just doing the best they can. And again, it doesn't have to be perfect. Just doing, being here and doing the best you can is all that matters. You'll still, you'll still feel better by the time we're done. Okay, so if you're ready, now we're gonna inhale and exhale and see if you can open up your heart and your stomach at the same time. There we go. And there's no pauses, no holds. You inhale a nice, deep breath and soft exhale. And we breathe in. And breathe out. And let me tell you, this is not easy. This can bring up a lot of annoyance and anger. But you will feel better by the time we're done. So just keep rocking it with me. So send your body some love. We breathe in. Breathe out. Breathe in. And follow my lead. Beautiful. You're doing great. And we breathe this way through the mouth. So then it opens your heart up. We let our hearts lead the way. And again, this is not easy to do. So be really loving and kind on yourself. You're doing great. Let me breathe in. Breathe out. In. Out. Yeah, and I've noticed a couple of you have grabbed some blankets. And that's good. If you're starting to feel cold, that's a good thing. The oxygen is moving down through the body. And we are focusing each inhale through the body. So only if you can, see if you can breathe all the way down into your hips and in your knees. There's nothing that you have to do or say. You don't have to change your thinking. Let your thoughts go wild, but keep that breath flowing down through the body. And we breathe in. Breathe out. Eventually, your mind and body will totally calm. But for now, we gotta get the oxygen in there. It's been a crazy year. And the oxygen is helping to let this stuff go. We breathe in. Breathe out. Breathe in. Breathe out. Inhale. Exhale. And it's okay wherever the oxygen goes to. For some people, this might be really hard to breathe into your hips. Or it might even be hard to breathe through your chest. So that just means we gotta open it up a little. So send three deep, loving breaths wherever you feel um stuckness, wherever you feel it's hard. Send three deep breaths through your body. And again. And one more deeper breath. Beautiful. And you will feel better. And with each breath that you take, your body is healing itself. You're doing great. We breathe in. Breathe out. Breathe in. Breathe out. And if you're starting to feel tingly, send three slow, deep breaths to give your body the energy it needs to help release. And this is very soft. Inhale. Exhale. In. Out. You're doing beautifully. I'm so proud of you guys. Great work. We breathe in. Breathe out. In. Out. And as you breathe, feel your connection. Breathe into who you are. Notice your body. Your body is always communicating with you. And send three loving, deep breaths into your body. Give it the power and strength it needs right now through this time. Beautiful, you're doing great. And again. And don't worry, we are gonna do a little speaking process in a little bit. And the call is muted, so no one can hear you. We're gonna check in with our body. But let's keep breathing through. We're almost to that point and that's gonna really help you feel better. And don't be afraid to take that big, deep breath in. I know this can be intense and this has been a wild ride this year. And if you're feeling fidgety, take three deep breaths into the fidget. If you're feeling nervous or anxious, take a nice, slow, deeper breath through it. This is gonna help you through everything that's going on in your everyday life is finding the breath. You have all the answers from within. There you go. Some of you are doing really good and taking really deep breaths. And some of you, it, um, I can see, maybe it's kind of hard to breathe into your chest. So if it is hard to breathe into your chest, send three loving, deep breaths right into your heart. And I need you to breathe in through your mouth. There you go, yep. Expand your chest. Expand your belly. Yeah, you're doing great. You're still, we're still moving through. You're still, we're still moving through. All the, all the stuff right now. Right now, you're in it. You're in the stuff. It's passing though, so that's a good thing. Keep that breath moving through. You so deserve it. You so matter. This is your time for you right now. Let me breathe in. Breathe out. Oh, I love it. Way to power through. Everyone's doing great. You deserve to feel good. You deserve to be happy. You matter. This time for you matters. Your body matters. How you feel matters. And we breathe in. Breathe out. Breathe in. Breathe out. And as you breathe. I now give my mind and body. Permission to relax a little more. My body knows exactly what to do. My body knows how to heal itself. All I have to do is keep breathing. There we go. Beautiful. I can start to feel. Each and every one of you, you're starting to get in the rhythm. You're becoming, you can feel the body and what it's doing. And it will pass. Just do your best. And we breathe in. Breathe out. Breathe in. And breathe out. And it, there may be some of you that are having a lot of sensations right now. And what I want you to do. I want you to relax your legs. Your belly, your chest. Give your body permission to let go. I want you to totally. Let your body go and just breathe. Don't resist what your body is trying to do for you. It knows how to heal itself. It knows how to let go. And so with each breath that I take. I give my mind and body permission. To just let go and surrender to this process and just breathe. You are safe and protected. God has you. Nothing bad's gonna happen. We're just breathing. And see now, everyone, I want you, I invite you to. See if you can breathe all the way down into your toes. Beautiful. Wherever your body needs some love. Send three deeper breaths. Awesome. And if you can't feel the oxygen going down through your hips, down to your toes, that's okay. You will by the end of the session. But power through. Again, let's blast your lower body with that breath in. Beautiful. You are safe. Inhale. You are safe. It's all gonna be okay. With each breath that I take. It's all gonna be okay. If you need to grab a sip of water. Yeah. Adjust, get comfy. I know there's a lot of new people on here today. This is a. Definitely a booty kicker. So. But you're gonna. Thank everyone and you're gonna thank me afterwards, I promise. Just keep the breath going. We inhale. Exhale. In. Out. In. Out. Breathe in. Breathe out. So proud of you. You're doing great. Breathe in. Breathe out. Breathe in. Breathe out. Yeah, and with each inhale and each exhale. Give yourself a break. You've been through so much this year. And just imagine with each inhale. You're breathing in your truth for you. You're breathing in. Your light, your essence. So whatever your needs are right now. Whatever they might be. I want you to pull it into your body. Pull it all the way down into your knees. Maybe you need a hug right now. Or maybe there's something that you really need. You know, some kind of support. Or whatever it might be. I want you to take three deeper breaths. To pull in that love and support that you need. Maybe you are worried or you have fear. So let's breathe in calm and safety. Let's breathe in. It's all gonna be okay. There we go. And again, breathe all the way down into your toes if you can. Your body is releasing. Your body knows exactly what to do. Don't fight it. And as you breathe, sink into how you're really feeling. Sink into these sensations. Sink into your emotions. Yeah, it totally sucks. It sucks to do this, I know. But it's gotta clear somehow, and this is the most loving and gentle way. That I know. To clear what's going on from within. I love it. Fidget, move around a little bit. Grab a glass of water. Do what you gotta do. And some of you are just totally relaxed and just flowing with it. You're doing great. You are where you are. And you're just right. And if you have fallen asleep, come right back into the breathing. We breathe in, we breathe out. And you may start to be relaxing right now. And if you do feel tired, keep blasting yourself with that breath in. Okay? Inhale. Exhale. Beautiful. I can tell in many of you. That the breath, notice from when we started. Over thirty minutes ago. Your breath is moving all the way down through the body. I can see what a difference. So beautiful. Now really focus, breathing all the way down into your hips. And now, be gentle. Please don't push yourself. There might be some of you who are pushing yourself too hard. You need to back off. This isn't about pushing yourself. This is about being really loving and kind. The breath is gonna take care of you. You don't have to work hard. Okay? The breath's gonna do everything for you. It's gonna open the body up so the body feels safe. To let go. So gentle inhale. Gentle exhale. Gentle inhale. Gentle exhale. In. Out. In. Out. In. Out. In. Out. Yeah, cough, adjust. Yep, get it out. There may be some of you who are fidgety. Pop your knuckles, whatever you gotta do. Yep, you're clearing. I would say this is a really good part for us to do that speaking process. You're gonna do great. Grab a sip of water if you need to. Alright, and what I want you to do is. Take three deep breaths wherever you have feelings or sensations. And let's just send some love. Into your body. Let's send some gentle kindness, compassion. Into the body. The body responds to us. So. You know, let's be good to it. Okay? And I want you to repeat after me. If this feeling or sensation in my body could speak. What it's really trying to say is. And then speak the first thing that comes to you. And don't worry, we're gonna do this process again. So let's send a few deep breaths down to the body. Wherever you store stuff. And here's the question. Repeat after me. If this feeling or sensation in my body could speak. What it's really, really trying to say is. And really let yourself connect with your body and what's going on. And get it out. What's the first thing that you saw or felt? And speak it out. This will help gently move. Any stored stuff in the body. Okay? Be loving, be kind. We're gonna ask your body one more question. Take three deep breaths down through the body. And repeat after me. If this feeling or sensation in my body could speak. What it's trying to show me is. What's the first thing that comes to you? You're all doing beautifully. And if nothing came to you, that's okay. Just keep breathing. I can't get over how fast this session is already going. Okay. So this is one of the most important part of the sessions. So now you're in it. Now you're in the session. You can feel what is going on in the body. So we just asked you that you be really loving and kind. And you don't have to say anything. You don't have to change your thinking. You just have to breathe in. It's all about the breath in. And okay, so before we do that, I do feel people are really tingly right now. So let's, let's process the tingling. So everyone take three deep, slow breaths through the tingling sensation. I promise this is a good thing. This is a good thing. This is happening. Okay? And repeat after me. If the tingling sensation in my body could speak. What it's trying to say is. And what's the first thing that comes to you? Yeah, there we go. And the more you can just speak it out. Just anything, whatever it might be. It might be more than one thing. The more you can speak it out of your body, the better you're gonna feel. Don't hold on to this. Let it go. Your body wants to let go. And you are in the safest place to let go. You are safe, loved, supported and protected. Okay? Back into the breathing. Inhale. Exhale. You guys are doing so good. Freaking warriors you are. There we go. Breathe in. Breathe out. Yeah, some people do get emotional. Let it, let it do its thing. Let yourself get emotional. It's okay. I love you. I support you. It's okay. You are so worthy. You deserve all the love and support you need. Right now in this moment. Yeah. You are worthy. You are gentle. You're not alone. You have everything you need with each breath that you take. It's all gonna be okay. And this is the part of the session. You've been working so hard to get here. And this is where the body. Gently releases. So please let it release. Yeah. You don't have to change your thinking. You don't have to work hard. You just have to breathe in. Beautiful. Breathe in. And if there's some of you on here who don't feel like breathing in, I need you to breathe in your strength. I know these are scary times. I know you're going through a lot. But I need you to do this favor for me and yourself and everyone involved. Breathe in. This is where all your strength lies. You got it. There's heaven on earth on the other side of this. And you can access this from within. You just gotta breathe. Nothing bad's gonna happen. You are safe, protected. You are always being guided. It's all gonna be okay. You are beautiful. With each breath that I take, you are beautiful. With each breath that you take, you are enough. With each breath in, I am enough. With each breath in, I have everything that I need to get everything that I desire. I have it all to do it all. I already have it all to do it all. Everyone, you're doing beautiful. Now see if you can, as you breathe in, blow your chest and your belly up at the same time. See if you can do your chest, belly, and hips. There you go. Really power through. And I can't believe this already. We're already in our final chapter of the sixty minutes. Way to go. You've made it this far. Look at how amazing you're doing. And we just asked that you be really loving and gentle as your body knows what to do. And we give our body permission to, to just let go. Any stressors, worries, fears, doubts, anxiety, if you're not sleeping well at night, it's okay. Use the breath. Use your oxygen to power you through. You're gonna sleep so much better tonight. You're doing beautifully. And in the last part of this session, I want you to focus the inhale going all the way down into your toes. Just blast yourselves with the oxygen and some good love and support that you need. If you feel heavy, send some loving, deep, slow breaths through the heaviness. Whatever you're experiencing right now, just send some loving, deep breaths through your body. Take your time. There's no rush. And give yourself permission to just let it go. It's okay. It's gonna be okay. Whatever's stressing you out, I now give it permission to let it go. Whatever boundaries you need for yourself, we just call in those boundaries. Whatever is not healthy for you, breathe in what is healthy so the old can just gently dissolve. You're doing so beautifully. You deserve to feel good. You deserve to be happy. And listen to my breath. I know this is hard. This last part's a toughy one. Breathe along with your mouth open. I need that breath to be big. There we go. Don't be afraid to inhale. Don't be afraid to breathe in. There's some people not breathing. There we go. I need to, I need you to breathe in. These are powerful times. Yep. That breath in is gonna give you everything that you need to power through. The breath in is like your shield, your warrior shield, your protection. This is what's gonna protect you through anything that comes your way each and every day. We breathe in. Breathe out. 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 That's it. Breathe in. Breathe out. In. Out. Beautiful. Warrior through. Yeah, let that shit go. Exhale. In. Out. And this is part of the session where people want to stop with the breathing. But don't stop. This is where it gets good. I know it sucks. I know this is hard. For most people, this is very hard to do. I know you're releasing. You're almost through it. You're almost through the birth canal. You're gonna be breastfed in just a minute. Breathe in. Breathe out. In. Out. Oh, and just sink into the emotions, sink into the feelings. Let yourself feel it, but breathe in through it. You're safe. I'm so proud of you. Look how far you've come. I love myself. I love myself. I'm doing the best I can and it's more than enough. Doing the best I can and it's enough. It's safe for me to trust myself. It's safe for me to trust myself. And I would say this is a really good time. In these last few moments, this is a good time to check in with all the sensations and feelings. It is normal to not feel good right now during this part of the session because you're in your last clearing. The body is doing its thing. So everyone, please take three deeper breaths down through the body. And repeat after me. If the feelings or sensations in my body could speak, what they're really wanting to say is... And what's the first thing that comes to you? Just get it out. Speak one thing or just speak it out. Yeah. You're safe. This is a safe place to let it go. You're doing beautifully. And again. You're doing so great. Yeah, this is not easy work. And you're doing it. You're totally rocking it. Okay, let's ask your body another question. And three deep breaths down through the body. And I love it. I mean, you can feel your connection. As you breathe in, you can feel your knowingness and your connection and what's right for you, no one else. This session is just for you. Okay? So connect with your inhale. Connect with the feelings or sensations. And repeat after me. If the feelings or sensations in my body could speak, what they're really trying to say is... And then speak it out, whatever comes through you. Totally rocking it. Okay, and one more question for your body, for your temple. Your temple that carries your soul, your essence through every, each and every day. Let's send it some love. Three deep breaths through the body. One more question. And repeat after me. If the feelings or sensations in my body could speak, what they want me to know is... Yeah, and what's the first thing that comes to you? My body just told me that you are safe and loved and supported and I don't have to be in fear and to just love myself through this time. So... And let's breathe for thirty more seconds. Your body is releasing. Yes, yes, yes. We are done with the breathing, but let's just breathe for one more minute. You just breathed for a full sixty minutes. I'm so proud of you. This is not easy work. Okay, let's just breathe for thirty seconds. Be gentle. Your body is releasing. Slow the breath down if you can. There might be a couple of you who feel anxious, like if you struggle with anxiety. Let your body just do its thing. Let it clear it. And we clear whatever's going on in the body by using this breath pattern. Alright. You have all the tools from within. If you feel that you're complete with the breathing, you may turn on your side. Please take your time. There is no rush. It's gonna take a few minutes to come out of this. I'm gonna breathe for just one more minute as everyone's just kind of adjusting because there are some of you who might be in it. And please try not to leave until, until you feel calm and happy. Don't, don't leave the session yet until you feel, you'll feel calm and, and relaxed. Wow, it's so cool to see people's faces after they breathe for an hour. They're just like glowing. Hey Cody. There are some people still in it. So for those of you who are still in it, like let's say you have tingling in your hands, what I want you to do is, uh, let's take three deep breaths in together. Yeah, your body's just releasing. That's all. It'll pass. And repeat after me. If the tingling sensation in my hands could speak, what they're trying to say is... And then speak the first thing that comes to you. Okay? I'm going to... Some people are still releasing, so... I'm still new to Zoom, so I don't know how to like not unmute everyone. So how about... I just wanted to make sure everyone's okay. I just wanted to see how you're doing. And if anyone would like to share, there are people still releasing. So let me change the setting real quick. Okay, I don't... Oh, that's so cool. It's knowing where you are. Okay? Alright. Great work. No rush. There are people releasing, so, um... I guess if anyone would like to share, see if you can hit unmute and...
I would love to share.
Okay, cool. Hey Cody.
Hey, thank you. You know, that was actually really mild. It was mild for me.
Oh, I would love to share.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll, I wanna make my share quick so we can make some room for everyone to share. So, I've been always looking for a person to love and it's a theme in my life. And it's gotten me into a lot of wrong relationships. And for the first time in my life, I'm disciplined at this point now to where I can actually date somebody and not rush into bed or not rush in, in general, in general. And for the first time in my life, I'm disciplined at this point now to where I can actually date somebody and not rush into bed or not rushing in general, in general. And I'm currently involved with someone and I'm just like, you know, getting to know them. And I'm constantly going back, like, should I do this or should I not do this? And I've always doing these extremes. And I realized that in my heart, I know that she's not the one right now. Remember? And. I forget that and my inner child likes to take over and just rush in and want to like, you know? And so I realized I can just allow. The whole thing to happen on its own time. Even though I know she's not the one, I can let it play out in a romantic sense and let that be revealed for everyone involved. Because I think I'm gonna get something out of that too. If I just allow her to come in and interact with her in that way. You know what I mean? Because a part of me wants to. So I think that's what I'm gonna do. I'm just gonna. Go in that direction, but in the meantime, I know that it's, I know that it's, she's not the one. And so just to wrap that up. It means that. I can just totally allow her to reach out and drive the whole thing. Just let her lead the whole thing.
Right on.
So that's what I'm doing.
Awesome. Thanks Cody. You did great. Everyone did so great. Oh my gosh.
I would love to share.
Yeah, go for it Lisa.
Can you see me?
I can. It's sideways. Can you turn your? Yeah, you're good.
Okay. I would just like to say thank you first of all. I'm fifty nine years old. And I've struggled all my life. With being able to let go. I've been hypnotized, I've been to psychiatrists, I've been on more meds than you can imagine. Because I can't let go. And I let go of more in that hour than I've let go in fifty nine years.
Wonderful.
And was actually laughing at the end. And I don't know where that laugh came from. Except for maybe fifty nine years of holding this shit in.
Yeah, woo, go Lisa.
God, that was amazing. You're a gift.
Thank you, and you are too. Thanks for being here.
I wouldn't have missed this for anything. Thank you.
Oh, anytime. Thank you.
Appreciate the experience.
Yes, absolutely. More coming your way. Well, just the beginning.
Just the fact that you provided this to us free. Just thank you. Not very many people are willing to do that. And that means, shows me what kind of person you are, so I thank you.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you. I'm so proud of you. Way to go. Anyone else?
May I share?
Hey. Spicyba. Hi Maxwell.
Can you hear me well?
Yeah, oh yeah. This is my acupuncturist, by the way, he's changing my life.
Oh, I've been wanting to go to an acupuncturist.
Yeah, he's been helping me heal my organs. Okay, yeah, share way.
I would really like to share that. Going into this. You know, I've done Qi Gong before, I've done breathing exercises. But. Trying this, this was totally new experience for me. I can truly say this, that I've never done anything like that. And I've done martial arts, breathing Qi Gong exercises. This was amazing.
Wonderful.
I felt tingling throughout the whole body.
I did too.
I felt like I was floating actually. My eyes were closed, but I was wondering, was I floating? I could totally feel. Like it felt like out of body experience kind of. When, when you just let go and just breathe. Like you don't even have to force yourself. You just breathe how your body wants to breathe. And, and then when you. When you started telling us about. Talking to our body and let it release things, yeah. Come out with things. I started crying. Because. Last night I, I dreamt about my grandma that passed away. Couple years ago. And I was trying to remember my dream and she was talking to me in the dream. She was telling me something very important. And that came out in my mind as I was breathing and it was. It was so wonderful, you know, it made me cry. And thank you so much for this experience.
Thank you for sharing.
Totally new for me and I think it's, uh. It's gonna do some, something different for myself. Going forward, I want to do more of this.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't think it's gonna be a big deal, but this is really a big deal.
I know, I know. That's how I feel. I'm like, everyone needs to know about this.
That I tried it. Went forward with it. I was like, ah, you know, I've done Qi Gong, this is breathing, it's not a big deal, you know, but. Would you watch me through today, what you did for us today, this is just wonderful.
Oh, Spicyba, thank you for being here.
Good experience.
Oh, you so rock Dr. You so rock. I know, and it's like. I love that you saw your grandma. That's amazing. That's a miracle. It's so beautiful.
Yeah, just coincidentally, last night I had a dream about my grandmother and. And while I was breathing, like her words were coming into my mind, what she was telling me in my dream.
Wow, that's so beautiful.
Grandmas are so wise, right?
Yeah, oh yeah. Awesome. Thank you Max. And yeah, I feel like breath work is the, but you don't need drugs. All you gotta do is breathe even for just ten minutes. Because you'll get to that floaty place in about ten minutes. Um, okay, if you could, just mute your. Thank you for sharing. And if you could, who's on here, just mute your. I think everyone's muted, but there we go. Okay, so anyone else would like to share, please go ahead. And thank you for sharing. It's amazing. It helps me release too. So I didn't get a release because I was breathing. So, and then I release when people share because it's so beautiful.
Hello Kamala, I'd like to share.
Hi Louisa.
Hey. I just wanted to say thank you. Mariano left a little early. His tooth actually came out while he was breathing. So he wasn't even wiggling, so it was really weird.
Oh my gosh, that's so cute.
It was already loose, but he's like, mommy, my tooth is bleeding, I'm gonna pull it out. Um, can you go over there? So, um, yeah, I just. Uh, one second.
Okay.
Close the door please.
I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna repost this, so it's, it's, this is recorded, so I'm gonna repost this, it'll be on my YouTube, so. He can, he or anyone else can reuse this anytime you want.
Okay, great. So I just also wanted to share my own personal experience and. Um, I've been having a lot of pain in my upper abdomen. And I know it's nerves and anxiety. But for some reason, while I was breathing, it was really radiated in that area. And I feel like it just really lifted. And I let go. A lot. And I had a feeling that the pain I was going through for the last week. Was more emotional, but I wasn't sure. But I really felt a relief. Thank you.
Oh, yes. Um, so let's just take three deep breaths in together, beautiful and. So your, your body is still releasing. Is there any way, even while we're, whoever else is sharing next, can you, can you just lay down for just a few minutes and breathe as it's still passing? If you can do that, Louisa. Oops. Okay, so yeah, if you can, you're, you're still releasing, so thank you for sharing. And I'm so happy for you and you're gonna feel better. Just keep that breath going. So some of you might still be releasing, so that's why we're kind of checking in before we head out. Anyone can leave whenever though. Okay. All right, anyone else, if you'd like to share?
I'll share. This is the like third or fourth hour long session that I've done. This is the first guided one that I've done. And I feel a little. Um, I, I, I feel like I have a little bit of a headache and I feel a little nauseous.
Okay.
Um, so it's not as, unfortunately, it's not as beautiful as the other people that shared, but I've just noticed it feels a little different. I feel like, like a little bit of a headache and a little bit nauseous.
Okay.
Is that normal?
Yes. Are, are you open to doing a little process real quick with me?
Sure.
Sharon?
Yeah, no, I don't mind.
If you can, just get comfortable.
Okay.
It, this just means your body's still releasing. So, um, I'm so glad that you said something. Okay, so I want you to just take. Three deep breaths into the nausea. Let's start with that. Excuse me. And imagine blowing that nausea up like a balloon. Beautiful, okay. And if you don't mind, if you don't feel comfortable doing this, just let me know. But repeat after me. If the nausea in my belly could speak.
The nausea in my belly could speak.
What it's really trying to say is.
What it's really trying to say is. Let go more.
Okay, there you go. So let go more. Okay, so take three deep breaths into that, into the nausea. And repeat after me, what I really need to let go of is.
What I really need to let go of is. Control.
Okay, there you go. And again, breathe, take three deeper breaths into the belly. So, and what does that nausea feel like now? Is it more, less, same?
It's less, I feel like I'm gonna cry though.
Yeah, that, because, yeah, there you go, so. Um, just keep, yeah, let yourself cry, okay girlfriend? Yeah, just let yourself cry. And I'm so glad you spoke up because this is really important that you speak up. Each and every person. And this, you're helping to show people that. Like even if you're not feeling good, like something else, like I wish I was feeling good, but I'm not, and so it just takes a couple more minutes. To, because the body's just releasing something and you know, you, you are the one who knows what that is internally, so. And you just keep the breath going and you're gonna feel so much better. Okay. And that's all it takes, is just a couple more minutes of breathing. There we go. All right, and how's your headache?
It's starting to go away.
It's starting to go away? Okay, good. Okay, so let's just take three deep breaths into your head, so breathe through your nose. And repeat after me. If the pain in my head could speak.
If the pain in my head could speak.
What it wants me to know is.
What it wants me to know is. You're thinking too hard.
Yeah. There you go. So you can, so, okay, so just send a few deep breaths into your head and. Um, I, I want to check back in with you in just a few minutes. Can you continue to just breathe until you clear and then sit up when, when you feel everything's clear? Because I, you think you made, you, you spoke out the biggest thing about control. So just take a few minutes and just breathe and let yourself just feel.
Okay.
And you did great. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, any, anyone else would like to share? Uh, even if you're not feeling good. Uh, this is the time and space to do it as, as it's clearing. And feel free for any of those on here, feel free to hop on, hop off whenever you need to.
Yeah, I just want to say bye Kamala. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much and thanks for chiming in Cody, you rock.
You too.
I'm so proud of you. I can see so much growth.
Oh yeah, I know, it's been a while.
I've seen your growth, man.
Yeah, you rock. I mean, you're the first one, so you gave birth to me in the breathing. Thanks Kamala.
You rock. Thank you. Bye. Okay, is there anyone else on there?
Yeah Kamala, it's Chris Fox. How are you?
Hi Chris, so nice to hear from you.
I'm just, uh, I wrote you a note, private note on.
Okay.
I don't know why, no, it, it, it's just a thank you, but I just don't know why, when this feels so good and does so much for me. Everybody else, you could just hear the elation. I don't, I wonder why it's so hard for me to keep doing it. You ever heard that?
You mean like, just in general, like to keep the practice going or like?
Yes, yes. Why don't I just, why don't I do this every, twice a week, you know, instead of once a month or once every six months, it's.
Oh man, I hear you. I mean, if it wasn't for twenty twenty. I didn't, I only did breath work on myself like once a month or like once a year even. I mean, that's how out of practice I was, even though I was doing tons of breathwork sessions with people. And twenty twenty has made me have to stop and take, and do breathwork for five to ten minutes every single freaking day. So it just, don't be hard on yourself.
Anyway, it's a really, it's a super duper wonderful thing. The first lady, I didn't catch your name, but that's exactly what I feel. Why, why, what have I been waiting for? You know, it just. Got sixty years of crap built up inside, just get rid of it, you know?
Yeah, 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 it's okay, you know, just, uh, even if you just, you know. It just, it's like anything, you know, eating healthy or working out, it's just like. It's, but if you can just remember this, inhale, there you go, I can see you. Inhale three seconds, soft exhale. If you can just, when you catch yourself holding your breath. Just three seconds in, soft exhale, just try to. After today, you won't need breathwork for a while. You'll, you'll be high as a kite for a couple weeks, you'll be fine. So.
I certainly hope so. Anyway, thank you. And I gotta run. Everybody, thanks so much for.
Nice to see you Chris. Thanks for being here. Okay, any, would anyone else like to share? I'm so proud of everyone, like holy crap. It's not easy doing this. Anyone else? Louisa, how are you doing? Beautiful. Are you okay? Did that anxiety release?
Yes, I feel much better.
Oh, good. Oh goodness. I, I didn't mean to cut you off quick. I, I.
No, I actually cut myself off.
Okay, I knew you were losing, so good. You're gonna feel so much better. So awesome.
I do already, thank you.
Okay. Well, if anyone else would like to share, I'll close in a few minutes.
Hi Kamala, this is Charis.
Hi Charis, how are you?
Good thanks. Um, one thing that happened to me and, um, I don't know if it's normal, but. I feel, feel like I started to have a panic attack. My hands, my fingers were so tingly that my hands. Like, you know, when you have like a muscle cramp in your leg and your feet or your toes or something will move or stiff up on their own?
Yeah.
Like, I felt like I was having nerve, um. Man, it was so, that was. Man, it was so, that was just the biggest emotional roller coaster that I just experienced. Um, I let go so much. I cried. I laughed the same thing as the first. I was bawling my eyes out like out loud and. Um, then I like got super dizzy and I really was scared for a minute that I thought I was gonna pass out. And is that like normal with your hands to do?
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely, especially if you're if you have a lot of stress that you're the body's holding on to. Absolutely. And um. If you had a, did you, do you know if you had a traumatic birth, like when you came into the world? Because sometimes that has a lot to do with it too.
Oh, interesting. That I'm not sure of, but.
If you had a hard birth and it was just traumatic coming out of the womb, yeah, sometimes it can just lock up. Uh, you know, when you see like pictures of babies and their hands or they've got like tetany.
Exactly. That's how what, that's how I was.
Yeah, so I mean, it's a miracle you made it through the session because most people just stop and they don't even get through the session.
I was so afraid to not continue listening to you that I would have put myself in a huge panic attack.
Yeah, yeah.
I felt like you helped. Yeah, you for sure helped.
So glad you got through. That's why it's like, it is nicer for me to see everyone because then I can see if people are, you know, if they're, because sometimes I can't, you know. Sometimes I feel what people are going through, but it's better if I can see them because then I know if.
I was scared and a little bit embarrassed or I don't know. This is new for me, so. I totally felt so comfortable though. Thank you.
Yeah, I know. And I I under- I understand that, but I was worried. I'm like, oh, what if someone's hands get tight and then they can't, but you made it through. No one dropped out of this breed, so I'm really shocked because it's not easy, especially when the panic comes up. You gotta get out of here, but then you might be stuck with it. And so it's like.
I was, I was trying to sit up to get a glass of water and I couldn't even like do that. I was like lock, you know, like hand lock.
So did you, did you, were you able to really like check in on like what, like when you were talking to the body, was your body talking to you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it was telling me that that you're alive, that I'm alive, that to feel. Let it go was, you know, so much energy just flowing through.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm I'm about to release soon this whole like birth process, like taking people back to their birth. So like, find out if there was a miscarriage or an abortion before you came in. Or if anything traumatic happened because the. Yeah, the fact that you said that I'm alive. Uh, you you really made it through something. That's that's hard. I'm I mean, it's amazing that you even made it through that session.
Yeah, I was was afraid. I was looking for my phone to call nine one one.
Oh, no. Dang it, I should have warned people, but then I didn't. Anyway, oh, thank you so much, Cherish. And and please, um. There's some people on here, if we're friends on Instagram, I.
I follow you, yep.
Okay, okay. I love communicating with people through that, so.
Thank, thank you so much. Thank, I just can't thank you enough.
Yes, and I will be.
I said, we need more people like you.
Oh, thank you. You're so sweet. There are breath workers out there. They're just really hard to find.
Thank you so much.
Yes, anytime. Thank you for being here.
Okay, take care.
Yes, take care. Okay. Anyone else like to share? Jimmy, how was your process? Oh, hold on. Ask to unmute.
Unmute.
There we go.
Good morning, beautiful. How are you?
I'm good, better.
Wow, that was impressive. I'll tell you, I totally drifted. I just totally went on to La La Land and that whole experience and um. I mean, I I was out. I was totally out. And then I'm not sure what woke me up. I think I last, I I was totally out until the end of it and uh. I had so many sensations in my hands. My hands were just absolutely completely tingling. And this this whole pain in my my hips from radiation and. You know, from from cancer treatment, you know, back in twenty thirteen, I had two months of radiation. And it really had a negative impact on my hips, right? My hip flexors and my. Uh, my movement and all that. And I've made a lot of progress. And um, obviously, we know each other because we've done other breathwork sessions in the past and I am totally endeared to this online thing. This is awesome. It just, it had this, it had a very similar effect, if not more powerful. And I'm so here, I was just so thrilled to hear everyone else in the group that had such a profound impact by it because. Truly, you know, we just store, we just get so locked up in everything and, you know, doing detox sessions. Uh, you know, yoga, breathwork, you know, all these modalities together, just especially after twenty twenty. This has just been a painful year for so many folks and uh. I just wanted to say thank you, lovely, beautiful, amazing person, and I just am so great. It was great to be here today.
You so rock. Yay. Thanks for being here and holding the space.
Well, thank you for creating the space and you all have a wonderful day and happy holidays.
Happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
Be well.
Right, love you. Thank you, Jimmy.
Bye.
Bye. Okay. Nice share. Anyone else? How is everyone? Just wanna make sure everyone's okay before we go. Nisha, how are you doing? Beautiful. Are you um? And nausea?
Um, the nausea's gone. Um, I still have a little bit of a. I don't know what's going on. Maybe I'm dehydrated.
Okay. You're releasing still?
I think.
Do you feel confused at all?
I did a little while ago. Um, but not anymore. Like I I feel like I know what's, you know, I feel like I know what's going on now.
Yeah, it's it's like. Doing this for sixty minutes, it just moves so much stuff.
Right.
And then it's like, it can be so confusing because then like for me, I try to figure out all the emotions I'm feeling and where it came from and why I'm feeling it. And so um. If you can, uh, well, just give yourself a few hours and it should clear. So you should, you know, and you may have to cry a little, you may have a cry or even if you just. Put on that download and breathe for a couple more minutes.
Sure.
But but just be gentle. Your body knows what to do and. I forgot to tell everyone to just give your bodies a few days because it's it's gotta adjust. So just. Just enjoy yourself and enjoy the next few days and, you know, observe the body, like your body will have changes. So or um, yeah, what were you gonna say?
I was gonna ask you, what is your favorite thing to do after a breathwork session? Like? Yeah, okay.
I eat like a hungry baby. I'm like, get out of my way. Do not come near me. So much food, like I'm about to mow down after this.
I'm feeling kinda hungry, so.
That's good. Eating and lots of water and maybe go for a nice gentle walk. Like I'm gonna be working outside the rest of the day, helping my dad. So you know, just be, just take really good care of yourself.
Okay.
And um, either people get lots of energy after the session or they get really tired. So just listen to your body. You're you're in charge, girlfriend, just. Yeah, but I'm so proud of you. Great, great work today.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. This was awesome.
And thanks for messaging me and reaching out.
Yeah.
You're rocking it. You got everything you need. All you need is a little bit of breathing and nothing's twenty twenty one, here we come.
Yeah, here we go.
Nothing's gonna knock us down.
Right.
Okay, thank you for sharing.
Thanks so much.
Yep. Okay, anyone else? Okay, I think unless someone else wants to share or you might be asleep, I don't know. Um, I'm gonna be doing this again within the next month. I'm gonna do another free one. So that's what. I keep hearing in my right ear. So I'm gonna do this again. A free one and we'll just, we'll figure it out. Thanks for kind of being my guinea pigs. I've never done it like this. I normally do these sessions over the phone. And then the call's muted. And there'll be like forty or fifty people on and I can't see them and they can't see me and they just hear my voice. And it's kind of nice doing it that way, but then. This is actually kind of cool too. So thanks for being patient with my process on this. Okay, um, like right now, I'd like to know how to unmute the whole call, but I I need to dink with this. Um, oh, hold on, I'm gonna ask you. Ask to unmute.
I think there are three dots up at the top. Do you see where it says more?
Um, I see view.
Okay, because it should say, you should see participants and then I think that there should be three dot six two.
Okay, there we go. So I've got. I got part, oh, more. Okay, I was wondering where that went. Okay. Here we go. Allow, okay, awesome. That's okay, that's that's what I needed to learn today.
There you go.
Okay, cool. Thank you so much, everyone. My love, good day too. Thanks for being here.
Bye.
Bye.